All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna get going. Biggest crowd I've seen in forty-five years. Anyway, before we open the 2024 special town meeting, we're gonna begin with the pledge of allegiance. The flag is right over there. Wanna stand, please? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. With that being said, the 2024 December sixteenth special town meeting is hereby called to order. Okay, just to go through a couple of things. Of course, according to our bylaws, we have to read, go through the articles in the warrant by lottery. So the town clerk, she'll draw it, whether we do Article One first or Article Two first. Our bylaw says we start, we do that, we select it by lottery. All right, just to go through a couple of things, just for procedure-wise. Just like every other town meeting, this is how it's gonna work. If you wanna speak to a particular article, you raise your hand. We're gonna alternate between, we're gonna alternate between this room here, the gym, and the all-purpose room. Raise your hand, I will call on you. You come up to the microphone, you identify yourself by your name and your address, and you'll be allowed to certainly speak, ask questions, or certainly give your opinion. I'm gonna ask, like we always do, to please be respectful, whether you agree with the person speaking or not. And the quicker we get through this and give people time to speak, we'll get through it as quick as possible. Another thing, too. Both articles in our warrant, Article One and Article Two, are gonna be voted either to accept or deny it by majority vote. It's not a two-thirds vote or anything. It's a simple majority. So that's why, if you don't have a red and a green card, raise your hand or something, we'll get you some. Because you're gonna need a red card and a green card. Okay, let's kick this off. I'll entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the warrant.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Bruno.
I would move that we dispense with the reading of the warrant.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the warrant. In a second. All those in favor of dispensing with the reading of the warrant, all those in favor, please raise your green card. Awesome, thank you. All those opposed. Sorry, Dan. Why don't we do it one more time? All those in favor of dispensing with the reading of the warrant, please raise your green card. Okay, thank you. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Okay. I have unanimous here. How do you, Dan, how are you doing, Mr. Bassari?
Unanimous for yes.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, now, the second thing is entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the constable return. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to, one more time, Bert.
It's a motion to dispense the reading of the constable returns.
To dispense the reading of the constable return. Yeah, second.
I have a motion and a second to dispense with the reading. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. I have unanimous here. Mr. Bassari?
Unanimous.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, what I'm gonna do, just to let you know, just introduce everyone. This is, these are our board of selectmen over here. Also, our town council, Rick, our town administrator, and our town clerk. And to my right is the finance committee. Sorry, I keep forgetting to get close as I can to the mic. All right, let's go with the lottery.
Article Two.
Okay, we're gonna start with Article Two. That will appear in the warrant. I believe it's on page eight. Yes, sir. This article was proposed by Mr. Goodman. Yes, sir, if you'd like to speak to your article.
Steve Goodman, twenty-fourth Avenue.
Can you get real close, please?
Mr. Moderator, I don't think there's a motion on the floor yet. He has to move it and somebody has to second it?
My apologies. I thought there was.
No, not yet.
All right, I need a motion then to debate Article, Article Two.
I'll make a motion to propose Article Two, to make it an article.
In a second. Okay, thank you. I have a motion and a second. Okay, yes, Mr. Goodman, would you like to speak to your article?
So I propose this article for an ongoing problem we had at one of the lakes. The language is very simple. Anything that's not specifically prohibited in here is allowed. I did wanna make one amendment to the language that's in the warrant, where it reads, "No PWC operations shall be allowed between the hours of 6:00 p.m. and 10:00 a.m." In order to bring this in line with existing town bylaw and state law, I'd like to change that language to say from the hours of dusk to 10:00 a.m. PWCs can't be operated after dusk because of the safety factor.
Mr. Moderator, so, point of order?
Yes, sir.
The maker of the motion is, the maker of the motion is, the motion's on the floor, now he's trying to amend it. To make things simpler, I would suggest that Mr. Goodman withdraw that motion with the permission of the second and then make a new motion exactly saying what he's trying to say now, so that we don't have to go for two motions, you know, a motion and then a motion to amend and so on and so forth. That would be simpler. My suggestion.
That does make sense. Okay, if you...
But, Mr. Moderator, again, what he would have to do is read the motion as he wants it on the floor with that amendment. So you would just read the motion, you're gonna have to read the whole thing with the changes that you are looking for.
Okay. So you make a motion to withdraw my previous motion? I'll make a motion to withdraw my previous motion on Article Two?
Second.
So I have a motion in a second to withdraw that. Need to vote in there. So we're gonna need a vote, a majority vote. All those in favor of allowing the withdrawal, raise your green card. All those opposed, raise your red card. Mr. Bassari?
I have unanimous, other than one negative.
Okay, it passes. Now, if you wanna make a motion to amend, the article is written.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the article as written?
No, 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 with corrections.
Mr. Moderator, another point of order. If the maker of the motion now can just move exactly what he wants on the floor, it's not an amendment. He's going to move, he's gonna read this motion with his changes.
Oh, he's not amending anything. It's a brand-new, it's a brand-new article. So your motion is to propose the following article.
I'll make a motion to propose the following article.
And please read it. Could you give, right to the mic, please?
"To use the personal watercraft, including jet ski watercraft, surfjet watercrafts, and wet bike motorcrafts, is prohibited on East and West Monponset Pond without a resident PWC permit, which is to be displayed prominently on the PWC at all times. The Board of Selectmen will establish a reasonable annual fee to acquire such a permit, any appropriate regulations regarding the use of such PWCs, and a fine of not less than $300 for violations of this bylaw. Resident PWC permits are to be issued by the Halifax Police Department. A resident with a PWC, resident PWCs with permit may be launched from one or two town-owned ramps located at the fourth Ave or Route Thirty-Six and from their own private property. PWC are prohibited from launching from the Route Fifty-Eight State Boat Ramp, also known as Wamsata Landing. No PWC are allowed on any town-owned beaches other than for the immediate purposes of launching or taking out. No PWC operation shall be allowed between the hours of dusk and 10:00 a.m. or take any other action relating thereto."
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Would you like to speak to this, Mr. Goodman?
I think it speaks for itself.
A little closer to the mic, that's all.
I think the law speaks for itself. I think anyone who's had to deal with the problem of non-residents and their lack of respect for our town and our waterways understands the intent that I'm trying to get through here. So I'll just let it stand as it is.
Okay, thank you, sir. Recommendation from the Board of Selectmen?
This is a petition article. The Board has not taken a position on this. We were, came in at the very last minute and we haven't really been involved in creating this language or anything. So the Board doesn't have a recommendation for or against. We'll do whatever the town wants to do.
Thank you, sir. Finance Committee recommendation?
As, as written, the Finance Committee does not recommend.
Okay, thank you, sir. I'll entertain now any questions or opinions or that would like to speak to this Article Two? Yes, sir, if you could come up to the mic and identify yourself, your name and address, please.
Don Barrows, thirty-three Ocean Ave. Why does the Finance Committee not recommend?
Hold on, I'll see if I can try to find that out for you.
I can certainly answer that. And any individual in the Finance Committee is welcome to comment also. So as it's written, if I'm reading this, and I believe I'm reading it correctly, there's only two places that someone can launch a PWC. So if I live on the pond or on the lake and I own a PWC, I can't launch it from my own pier. That's what this says.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. I believe what he, I believe what he, excuse me. I believe what he read and amended, and Mr. Goodman, correct me if I'm wrong. You did specifically say that they may launch from one or two town-owned ramps located at Fourth Ave and Thirty-Six and their own, and their own private property. Did I get that correct?
That's correct. I added that language after some input from citizens in town. They read it and they brought that to my attention, that I didn't specifically enumerate the people who lived on the lake. And it also doesn't address mooring. If you have a mooring, this is putting in and taking out, which you can do from your own private property. That's why I made the change.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does the Finance Committee wanna make a recommendation at this point with those changes?
Okay, so, we will change it to a recommendation. However, just one, one point. When he was making his change, he didn't say he was changing and adding private property. He just said dusk to 10:00 a.m.
Yes, he did.
Did he? I didn't hear it. I didn't hear it. Then he needs to get closer to the mic.
I believe that is what he said. If I got that correct, I, yes. Launching from your own private property is included. So there is a recommendation from the Finance Committee? If I got that correct?
Yes.
Finance Committee does recommend. Any other questions, opinions? Yes, sir. Oh, hold on one second. Can you hold on one second? Mr. Bassari, go ahead. I forgot I was alternating. Go ahead.
Yes, sir. But identify yourself and your address.
Hi, Deb Rosenberg, five-five-nine Monponset Street. Who is in charge of monitoring this? Who? Who goes to see who has their stickers?
Let me see if I can find the answer for that. Mr. Goodman, sure, thank you.
For those that don't know, any law in town, you can, you can call the police department. But we specifically have a police chief who's also listed as a harbor master. He doesn't have a boat, but... That's another issue for another meeting. But the police chief is the harbor master, so any town bylaws that have to do with our waterways, he has full enforcement authorities.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am, if you'd like to come to the mic?
Bonnie Johnson from Plymouth Street. You seem to be penalizing the people that own watercraft in the town by making us get a permit and not penalizing the people or creating the problems. Years ago, my husband had to get a sticker when we didn't live in this town in order to fish. Why can't you have the people that wanna use the pond for jet skis or whatever apply for the permit? Go to the town hall, get it, or go to the police station and get it? And charge a large enough fee that you'll distract people from coming here?
Thank you, ma'am. Let me see if I can get an answer to that. Mr. Goodman, would you like to address that, your article?
The out-of-town groups that come have specifically said to me they come here because we don't have any regulation. And it's not necessarily that they're out of town, it's that they don't respect the waterways. The town did try to impose parking tickets to kinda make it less, you know, kinda make it less attractive for them to come to the beach. And I witnessed them just rip the parking ticket up and throw it on the ground because the price was inconsequential. And that's what I'm trying to do away with, is the people who don't respect our town. I'm not penalizing the people who live in town. You'll notice there's no fee listed for residents. You just have to go to town hall, something that proves you're a resident, and get your permit. The income will be generated from the fines. Because the people that don't respect it, they will, they'll stop coming. Permits, they don't care about permits. Half the time, their watercraft aren't even registered. As are their trailers and their cars aren't even registered. They don't care about that. And they don't care about the town. That's why they come here, because they don't live here.
Mr. Bassari?
Charles Rogers, five-oh-nine Monponset. I live on the East Lake. Been there for forty years and I do agree that there's sometimes the jet skis are a little bit of a nuisance. But I believe in freedom and I believe that when I bought my property, I knew that there was gonna be jet skis or other types of things. And I find that after fifteen or so minutes, people get tired and they pull it away. So I believe that the lakes are a beautiful asset to our town. They attract people to the town. That's the reason I moved to the town, because of the lakes. The freedom to use the lakes, I believe, is something that people that moved here ought to have. And just because one person thinks that they're bothering him, I guess that he knew that when he bought the property. So did I, and I think that allowing the people to have the freedom to use the lake, the most that I can say is that the lady who just spoke about having the out-of-towners get a permit would be an opportunity to read them a little bit of the proper etiquette for using their watercraft.
Okay, thanks, sir. Yes, sir.
David Masiello, sixteen, tenth Ave. So I just wanna, I wanna clarify some things that Mr. Goodman has stated with this as far as what the responsibilities are for the people using the personal watercraft, is to not only help not treat or misuse the lake, there's a number of other things that the people from out of town, sir, that you were speaking of, are disrespecting our town. Primarily, the environment. Secondly, our children. Because I've witnessed this as a resident, I've only been here since 2018. As a resident, I've seen these people on the personal watercraft using their equipment within the boundaries of the swim area on Fourth Ave, which becomes a safety issue, especially for me who frequently uses the lake with my children. Okay, we've spoken to these people. We've asked these people to behave. We've asked these people to stop doing what they're doing. They do not comply, they do not care. The reason why we're asking for this is because in the time that I've been here, the time that I've gotten the opportunity to use the lake, there has never once been an issue with the jet skiers or the people using the personal watercraft or the boaters that were resident. The boaters, the people using the personal watercraft, were respectful of the other people. I've seen people on paddle boards, I've seen people on wakeboards, excuse me, kayaks, that were, that were being somewhat, what's the term? Harassed, thank you. Harassed because they were on it. Also, we have the Five-Fifty Tavern that has a beautiful, they've redone that and made it so they can have beautiful weddings and so on there. And these jet skiers have personally pulled up and yelled at these people having a wedding vulgarities of what they were choosing to do. The people that are doing the porta potty, the gentleman that has to come over there and vacuum the porta potty out where was diapers stacked up above, and I apologize for this grotesqueness, but the abuse of the trash and the facilities that our town's taxes are paying for is beyond what we need and what this town deserves. I really think that this is something we need to just vote on and I'd like to make a motion to call the vote this article.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor and I have a second to call the article.
Mr. Moderator, I have a second.
Okay, right now, we're just gonna, we have to vote on the, on calling the question.
Mr. Moderator? Maybe you need, could explain what it means to call the question, that we are ending debate? That's the issue that's to be addressed with this motion.
Well, that was the point. There was one more lady over here that didn't wanna speak.
If it's a motion on the floor, our point of order, I would suggest, is if the motion is on the floor, then that ends debate on that issue until the town meeting says otherwise.
Correct. Thank you very much. Yes, Mr. Bassari, we have a motion on the floor and a second to call, call the, call the article. Okay, so right now, we're going to vote on whether or not we're gonna end debate. Not on the article itself, on just ending the debate. This requires a two-thirds vote from the town. All those in favor of calling article, raise your green card. What's that? Yes. Mr. Bassari? They don't, they don't have to count for this.
Same, same here, Mr. Moderator.
Okay. Once again, all those in favor of ending the debate on Article Two, raise your green card. Mr. Bassari, in your room? All those opposed, raise your red card. I have two-thirds vote here. Mr. Bassari?
I have two-thirds green here.
All right, Article, the motion passes to end the debate. Okay, now we're gonna vote on the article itself. We're gonna vote on Article Two as it was amended and changed by, by Mr. Goodman. So, Mr., you want your county score on this one?
No, we see a simple majority.
Oh, that's right, it's a simple majority. You're right. It was just, we call, so this is a simple majority on whether or not Article Two passes. All those in favor of Article Two, please raise your green card. Mr. Bassari, you're all set in there?
Yes, sir.
All those opposed, please raise your red card. Passes. Article Two passes.
Mr. Moderator, we also had majority green.
I'm sorry?
We also had majority green in this room.
I couldn't understand. Yes, I saw that, thank you, Dan. All right, let's move on.
Article One.
Mr. Moderator, I would move Article One as presented in the warrant.
Second. I have a motion and a second to move the article as presented.
We're gonna put the zoning map up on the screen so that everyone knows what we're talking about.
I'd like to make a motion.
There you go. So, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir, would you like to speak to this?
So, on this article, the state of Massachusetts, a couple of years ago, passed a law known as Three-A, Chapter Forty, Section Three-A. Between that law and the regulations that came from it, Halifax is designated as an MBTA community. We can go into detail as to why that is, but the short answer is that it's because we have a railroad station. Under the law, under Section Three-A law, MBTA communities, such as Halifax, are required to adopt an overlay district which allows, as a matter of right, multifamily development. So that they don't have to get any further permission to build apartments or condos in that district. That's the law. In response to that, and the law also requires that we do this by the end of December. That's why we're having this meeting so late in the year. The penalties, if you don't follow the law, include loss of discretionary grants, not, not all money, but certain money from the state. There's also, the Attorney General has come out and indicated that she will seek civil enforcement against any town that doesn't follow the, doesn't comply with the law, meaning she's going to try to force us to do, to do, to accept such a overlay district. What the Board of Selectmen has done with the help of a zoning bylaw review committee and so on, has presented to town meeting a proposed bylaw which we are told by the state is, would put us in conformance with the law. Essentially, what we are proposing here is that the Twin Lakes development and adjoining land between Twin Lakes and the railroad track, known as the Garden Company Land, be made into an overlay district for this MBTA multi-housing development. That's really what's here to be decided on. Whether the town agrees with the zoning law as it's written in the state or not, we really don't have a choice on that. All that you can do is either accept to comply with the law that we presented or not. And so that's what the issue is tonight.
All right, the article itself was proposed by the Board of Selectmen. Is there a recommendation from the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen has serious concerns with the law itself. We have proposed this bylaw and tonight's town meeting so that we are giving the town the opportunity to be in compliance. The Board itself has never recommended this law. And I think my two selectmen each have a comment to say about that.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, can you guys hear me okay?
Mr. Moderator, can you guys hear me okay?
Mr. Don, if you don't want to sit down, I'll call on you when they're done.
All right. So first, as we start tonight... I wrote it down here on my phone to make sure I remembered everything. I ask residents to keep things respectful. Everyone here is here because they care about Halifax and want to do what they think is right for the future of our town. Whether you agree with the person sitting next to you or not, please keep that in mind. I wanted to let everyone know where I stand on this MBTA zoning issue and why this has been such a tough decision for me these past few months. First off, let me start by saying I don't think anyone here tonight wants the state of Massachusetts telling us in Halifax how to establish the future of our town. First off, that said, I understand what the state's trying to do. Increase housing inventory by creating housing close to public transportation in efforts to decrease the number of cars on the road and ease environmental impacts. But this does not work for a town like Halifax. We are not Quincy. We are not Braintree or Weymouth. People in those communities could conceivably lean on public transportation instead of cars. But our train station is miles away from our town center, and as a result, no one would likely be walking to Walmart or to our senior center or to Halifax Elementary School. The MBTA zoning law mandate is a one-size-fits-all law, and in Halifax's case, they're telling us to cram a size 10 into a size 6. But to shake our fists and scream "no" just to make some sort of grand statement and not weigh the consequences of what that means is not only shortsighted, but irresponsible. Whatever we decide tonight, it will have repercussions. A yes vote could mean development and more taxing of our natural and town resources. A no vote means we will lose out on discretionary grant funding, and there is a very real possibility that our tax money could be going towards fighting legal battles with the state of Massachusetts instead of going towards things like our school, our first responders, and other town services. We already know here in Halifax that the upcoming year is going to be financially challenging. We're a small town with a small business tax base. But because of this, the town has historically used discretionary grants, like the ones that will be in jeopardy, to help the town move forward. And there's no doubt about it, losing those will hurt. But since I took the job of selectman, my duty remains first and foremost to do the will of the people of Halifax, not the state of Massachusetts. Because of this, and because I do agree that this is an overstep of state authority, I will be holding up a red card and voting "no" on Article 1. No, don't. Please, 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 don't. This, honestly, this is nothing... I want you guys to understand, this is really nothing to celebrate tonight. Because... Do I feel great about this? Absolutely not. But honestly, I would feel not great about voting either way tonight because, quite frankly, there really isn't a great option here, given our two alternatives. But I do hope that if this article does fail tonight and that residents will understand if they start to notice a change in the level of our town services as a result, and they understand the results of what we decide. Again, I will back whatever we want to do, and I thank you all for your time.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sealy. Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, I have a lot of the same... Actually, we didn't collaborate on our note, but I have a lot of the same phrasing. So, good evening. I'd like to thank everybody for their patience tonight, and thanks for spending us a few hours with us so close to the holiday. This has been a long process. Nobody at this table, nobody at that table, put this in front of you tonight. This is coming from a higher level. This is not our recommendation, clearly. It's been a long process to get here. We were led by our town administrator, who put in countless hours, time and effort, who I'd like to thank, Cody. I'd also like to thank the members of the zoning bylaw review committee, John, Jeremy, Frank, Jerry, Jim, and others, Ed Bailey, Commissioner, Building Commissioner. Very valuable service they provided to the town. One of their aspects was to bring this to the meeting tonight. They have done that. So whether or not you agree with Article 1, I'd like to remind everybody of two things. Nobody here has asked for us to be here tonight. But here we are. And a lot of time and effort has been put in behind the scenes to get us here. But that doesn't make it an article worth your consideration. The town, in my opinion, has met the obligation and the burden placed upon it by the Commonwealth by holding quorum tonight and putting this to a vote. But that is where my support for 3A ends. I have been consistent throughout the process in stating that a no vote should be given. Halifax is different than Hanson, different than Middleborough, different than every other city and town in the Commonwealth. We don't fit in a box, and we shouldn't acquiesce to the state from their 40,000-foot view from above. As I've been told for years by people smarter than me, you can't put toothpaste back in the tube. Once you vote it, it's here. I would caution you with that vote. As Jonathan mentioned, there are ramifications, repercussions, and fallout from a no vote, and we all need to be prepared for those. Those will not be easy or fun to deal with, either on a municipal level or in individual households. There will be an increased burden faced upon many of us with a no vote. But to protect the fabric of the town, the no vote is where I have been since I was elected in May and where I remain this evening. It's a long-term view to vote "no." The short-term view is to give the state what it wants. The problem is the state will never stop asking the ones you've given in. The long-term view to protect the town, in my opinion, is a no vote. That's where I've been since May, and that's where I remain tonight.
Okay, thank you, sir. Make note, too. The planning board held a public hearing also, and you'll see on page 7 in the warrant that the planning board does not recommend Article 1. I'll turn to the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee, recommendation?
The Finance Committee understands both sides of the equation and the financial impacts, so at this time, we make no recommendation on Article 1.
Okay. On that, I will open it up to questions. Mr. Donnelly was first. Mr. Donnelly first.
I'd just like to make...
I thought it was Mr. Donnelly.
He waved to me.
Oh, he waved to you? Oh, okay. Your name and address, please.
Jeff Bolger, Berndy Circle. I would just like to make the point, I don't think anyone should be afraid of a no vote here. We've got a governor who goes nationally and says, "I'm going to defy federal immigration law." If she can do that, we can certainly say "no" to this.
Thank you, sir. Please. Please, order. Mr. Basari. We're going to alternate rooms. Anybody there would like to speak to the Article 1?
I'd like to motion that we end debate. Everybody knows why we're here, and just go to the vote. We have families to get home to.
Thank you. Mr. Donnelly. Your name and address, please. You need to get really close.
Van Donnelly, 201 Cranberry Drive, Halifax, Mass.
Hold on, Dan. Hold on one second. All right. Mr.... Hold on one second. Mr. Basari, I'm not going to recognize that request to move the question because that ends debate. And I think we should have at least some form of debate before we end the debate. So I'm going to allow... I'm going to allow some people to speak. Okay. Just had to do legal verification, that's all. So, yes, I am going to allow some more debate. And if the motion to call the question comes up later on after some debate has been made, then we'll move on to... That's correct. And then I ruled that it was out of order, as I just said. So we're going... Because I said I'm going to allow more debate. No, I checked the time. That's the moderator's decision. Okay? So if somebody else wants to voice an opinion, we could certainly do that. And then if someone calls the question, we can do that also.
I'll make a motion. Karen Faver, 66 Clidow Bosworth Road. I want to make a motion as well. Call the vote. We already had a first. We already had a second. Call the vote.
Once again, I'm going to allow people to express their opinion before we rule to call it. Ma'am, would somebody like to speak?
Yes.
Mr. Donnelly.
My name's Ed Murphy, 20 Larry Ave. I would like to express my opinion to just go to a vote.
Hold on, Mr. Basari. Hold on one second. Mr. Don.
I would just like to say this town's had a lot of debate for a long time, and that's, I think, why you see a lot of people here. But I'd like to make a motion to deny non-residents, other than those who work in the town, and the town council from speaking. We've had enough on this subject. I've had people at my house. It needs to end, and we need to send a message to the State House.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Basari, is there someone there who would like to speak to it?
Yes. My name is Ed Murphy, 20 Larry Ave. And my opinion is, we just move to make the vote. No more debating. There is nothing left to debate. Anyone who's been involved in this issue knows what the issue's about. Once again, please move forward, and let's make the vote.
Okay, thank you, sir. Yes, sir, with the red card. Mr. Masiello. Like to make a motion to call the vote? Okay. We've had enough debate. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second to call the... I have a motion and a second to call the vote. I'm going to... This is going to require a two-thirds vote to end the debate. So just to make that clear. So all those in favor of ending the debate, please raise your green card. Mr. Basari. Okay, all those opposed to ending the debate, raise your red card. Mr. Basari, do you have a two-thirds vote? Yes, we do. We have a two-thirds vote here also. We ended the debate. Okay, now, we are going to vote on Article Number 1 as presented in the warrant. This will require a majority vote. All those in favor...
Mr. Moderator? Point of honor, order, rather. Could you please tell us what a yes vote means and what a no vote means?
Certainly. A yes vote means you're in favor of Article 1 on the proposal for the MBTA. A no vote would be you're opposed to it. Do you need further explanation than that? Yes. All those in favor of Article 1 as presented in the warrant, please raise your green cards. All those opposed to Article 1, please raise your red card.
Red wins.
Mr. Basari, do you have a majority vote in the all-purpose room?
Majority in the negative.
When we have a majority vote here in the gym, the motion does not pass.
Mr. Moderator,